See, I told you that was great.
You can't take it back.
And it's my understanding they're gonna do some other features on our project as it develops. But that'll air on PBS in the spring, so we just wanted to share that with you tonight. And we know we have to talk a little bit about these. But the first thing that we do want to say is, we are so thankful, this is the board and Jeff, for getting our windows.
Our windows?
And if you didn't hear me say, Sean was so great to send me a message yesterday and keep me updated, and I went immediately to announce it on the intercom, and Jesse said you could just...
You get your chairs.
In the hallway of the elementary.
I never heard it.
Said, "We're very happy, it's gonna make such a great difference in this building with the feel, and the inside, and the just the looks." So, we're very, very happy about that. The only other thing that we felt that we really needed, we really, you know, we don't have a lot of extra money, we're not Title I, which I know Title I is for certain things, but we still kinda need a few more cameras. We feel like some area of the playground isn't monitored too well, and we do have issues with people in the community coming out and doing some things they shouldn't be doing. So, you know, that, and for safety too, for our own kids.
Yeah, there's several hallways.
Yeah, the cafeteria hallway here, it does not have a camera, and the kindergarten hallway, once you go through those double doors. So, those are some things that we felt like we needed help with. And also, you know, we feel we're working on some things in our gymnasium and the middle school, but if there was any way we could get help down the road with bleachers, we are in dire need of new bleachers in there. They're just in very poor shape. So, those are the two things that we would request. We wanna thank you very much just for letting us be administrators at this school. It's a wonderful school, we have great staff, and we just appreciate all of you at any time, I always tell them like this, anytime, tell them to come walk through the building with us, because we would love to show our teachers and our building off to you, so you're more than welcome to show up. So, thank you, thank you.
We certainly appreciate all your doing, and a lot of great things going on here. It's the obvious, speaking for some people, certainly happy about this day. Let me just ask one question about achieving. I know the test scores this year are being liked and all that, because of you, how have you had to adapt as you've introduced the data this year for construction?
Well, you know, of course, we were able to, after we did get some data information, we were able to use that for the rest of the test. We also, last year, all of our grade level growth column assessments as a benchmark for the year. So, what they do, they gave it in the fall, when we first came back to school, they're gonna give it in January, and then they're gonna give it at the end of the year. So, we can truly say it's the same test, but it's their content for the year. And I know that even like Ms. Davis, some of her kids were very struggling, and they were like, "I don't know these answers." She said, "Well, you're not gonna know all of those answers, I want to see where I'm at around the year." So, we sat down last year with our sick nanny and wrote column assessments for every grade level. Also, what they do is, they do their assessments and, you know, whatever they're working on, whatever those assessments are, they take that student work at that time, and they analyze that data, just formative, just daily work that they're doing. Second grade and third grade and some other grades, they have an SPL where one teacher will take the students that just need to be accelerated, and then one teacher will take the group that's in the middle, and then one will take maybe the ones that need, you know, their basic skills again. So, every time that they assess that information or anything they're doing in their class, they look at those lists, and if a student needs to move up, they move them up, or if they need to go back down for a little bit for some more help. So, they're looking at that data, which is more important to me, because it's daily where they're at.
So, you're not totally reliant upon the state?
No, we look at everything that we, you know, our DIBELS, our SRI, SMI. We now are using MobiMax too, and it is very good to show where our students are, it puts them at the level they're at, and moves them up on the computer, and they can use that at home, it's for reading and math. And then we use iRead, again, we talked about iRead last year. So, that gives them reports, and gives me reports of where those students fall. And we're constantly doing, you know, those formative assessments, not just the summative.
All right, appreciate it. All right, once again, thank you all, and thank all the faculty and students who come out this evening. This is one of those things that's kinda beyond the call of duty, appreciating you being here.
May I interject something?
You sure may.
Briefly, Mr. Priestley, in our travels last week, I've been doing some just preliminary research with John Hattie's work, and he is the most current guru on meta-compression. And I looked down this list of the inputs and resources, and Hamilton K.A. has at least five high-effect strategies listed here, which proves that their students are going to have significant academic growth based on the most current research, and this man's done over fifteen thousand RAN studies. And when I look down through here, everything that we do is effective, but some things are more effective. We need to look for those high-effective. And it's just refreshing to see, Mrs. Ferguson, that, and I just look down through here, there are five in the top twenty-five. So, it's, we're on the right track.
Everybody seems to be pulling in the second record.
We're working hard.
I also would like to thank you all, and thank you all for everything that you all do every day. And it's quite apparent as to why you all were chosen to be a Catholic school, because looking at what we're doing, not relying on the state testing, relying on what the teachers are doing every day, and therefore, figuring data and analyzing the data in their PLCs, they know what they're looking for, their student mission, and there is such a climate here of willingness, and you all allowing them to, the opportunity to use the time, and they use it wisely, and it's much appreciated. And when Dr. Cockrell approached me, I was very pleased in, you know, just knowing that, you know, you guys were moving in the right direction, and it takes all of you, and you all work so well together. And I appreciate that so much. Thank you.
Now, as you go on, we're gonna climb.
You all have places to go every day. Okay, next, now, Mr. Smith is not, I understand he's the only one here. Is there anything along the way that we can do here? I know most of the conversation's about the traffic lights, or anything in particular?
The flashing lights are installed, correct, at Downey Valley?
I think they need reprogrammed when they're coming back.
But they're there, and that just gives them the reprogramming. And he has a lot of information regarding the sign, but we don't have that to share with you all tonight.
Can you guys talk to him about the issue? He should have saw that one, he's had some progressive tapes that... Okay, well, it doesn't look like you have anything else on the presentation, so we'll leave it to you. I don't know, it must have been one of those, I just went right over top there. Mr. Lynn?
If you look, I'm getting things ready, you have a link folder with information on the sign. Okay. First, I want to thank you for this opportunity to present. And the cargo's been lifted. All right, good. So, that's been lifted. Over on the left side of your folder is some information. I'm not going to go over, it has an overview of West Virginia's DSA accountability system, but it also has the different schools and what classifies each school. And that way, we went over this before, so I'm not, unless you want me to go into it.
Now, can you tell us, how long will this be in a cloud? Yes, you will talk about that in a minute.
Okay. Over on the right side, you have what's called the West Virginia Accountability Index for 2013, 14. I've tried to do this in just a couple of slides instead of having several slides. What I wanna do first is, let's go across the top here of explain this. I'm gonna start with the end in mind. Over here on the right, I'll give it that name. Well, anyway, over on the right, you will see a total index score, okay, and that's based on a hundred, okay? And then you'll see a target index, but everything is based on a hundred percent. Not, and each one of those is a percent, those numbers going across through there, they're not a long number, okay? So, if we go back over, now I want to scroll down before I start explaining this, I wanna scroll down to the bottom, 'cause there's a key here that will help you when I start explaining this. Okay? If you see in the yellow down at the bottom, says CI, confidence interval. There's a couple of ways that schools can meet the objectives. One of them is to just meet the number they have to have, and another one is the confidence interval. I'll explain the confidence interval. First, I'm gonna say confidence interval is good, just remember it's good. And what it means is, for example, you have a small population of students taking the test. So, if you look at the percent, if there was a larger number of students taken at with the same scores, then the chance of them meeting that percent would go up more as students get. That's what it was explained as. The confidence interval means good, okay? And then, I'll shine it up on the screen if that shows. Okay. Also, you will see there on the bottom in the key, you see green, all subgroups. You'll see blue, which is special ed subgroups. So, I started explaining this, I started over the key first. Okay. In order to meet the index or the annual measurable objectives, you have to have, it's kind of a pink here, you have to have fifty percent of your subgroups meet the mark, okay? For example, let's say at Hamlin, they would have four subgroups, or they would have two subgroups. They would have one in regulars, all students, then they would have a special ed subgroup, okay? And then they would have a math special ed subgroup, and our LA subgroup. They'd have, they really would have four subgroups, okay? In a subgroup, you see twenty. Used to be the subgroup, you had to have twenty in order to be accounted, or have fifty be accounted. When the assessment changed, it changed to twenty, okay? Everybody has that subgroup and everything except Ranger. Ranger doesn't have a subgroup in special education, okay? Because we're talking about, when you talk about assessment, you're only talking about grades three to the lead. Okay. In the yellow there, is the full academic year. It used to be, it was like if a student was there the fifth instructional day, begin the year, and was in that same school the second day of testing, then they counted against the four or against that school. Now, it's a hundred and thirty-five days. In other words, a student can come to Hamlin, they could go a year for twenty days, go to Guyan Valley for ten days, come back to Hamlin the rest of the year, it'd be a hundred and thirty-five days in this school, so they would be accountable here. Okay. In the end, by 2020, each school, their index score, elementary's will have, they have a seventy-four point six-six, middle school's a sixty-five, and a high school seventy-one, seventy-two. Total index points out of that hundred that we talked to about at the top, okay? Then the AMO's, annual measurable objectives, each school, each group will have to have seventy-five percent proficiency. Remember the old one, they said a hundred percent would be proficient by, well, we don't have to have a hundred percent, if we get seventy-five percent, we'll be tickled to death, okay? So, that's our key. Now, I'm gonna go back up and start at the top and kinda go across each school. Okay. But going across the top, you see the proficiency, forty percent of the index, which is annual measurable objectives, sometimes are called the AMOs, okay? You see twenty percent of that is the achievement gaps closed. Okay? The next is observed growth, is fifteen percent of it, adequate growth is twenty percent, attendance five percent for elementary, and graduation is thirty percent of the index for a high school. Okay? Now, remember, these are all based on percent, okay? So, when you look at Lincoln County High School, I have last year's data, and I have this year's information in here. If you see green, that means they did well, if you see blue there for the special ed subgroup. For example, at Lincoln County High School last year, well, let me answer Mr. Priestley's question first, the levels of schools. If you were a priority school, you remain the priority school for three years, no matter what you, what you do, okay? And this was a second year, or we're starting a second year, okay? So, they'd be a priority school for one more year. If you were a focus school, like Duval and Hamlin, you're in that category for two years. So, this is the second year of that, you couldn't move out of that category. Now, the others, we have, put the glasses on, you put the transition, Harz is a transition school. That means that you met half either the math or the reading language arts part of those AMOs, you had to meet one of them, okay? This is the first year that we've really, Harz was designated. Remember, they were there half a year and that data didn't count, and last year was the first year their data counted, but this is the first year they were classified, okay? Midway was a priority, it remains a priority because of three years, one down the left-hand column there. Ranger was a success school last year, but success and transition and support can move each year. So, Ranger was a support school, this year they're a transition school. West Hamlin was a support, they remained a support, Guyan Valley was a transition, they remained a transition school, okay? Next, as we go across, I'm gonna put it on the screen, if you look Lincoln County High School, you see 2013, their proficiency index out of forty percent was three point four-nine. Well, this year, it moved to eight point four-one percent of that forty percent, okay? If you see in green, you see yes, you see RLA, American, and reading language arts, straight out. You see math, yes, M is for math, CI is for confidence interval. They met it in math, not straight out, but they met it by the confidence interval portion, okay? If you come on across, the achievement gaps closed, which that's achievement, the focus schools is based on achievement gaps between the different subgroups. If you look at achievement gaps, Lincoln County High School made an improvement there in closing the achievement gap. The observed growth is your actual score that you have. You see they made a gain there. Adequate growth, which is twenty percent of the index, is looking at that seventy-five percent by 2020, and they take that percent of where you are, and they divide it by the number of years that you had to get there by 2020. So, you know, you may have to grow eight percent, eight percent, eight percent to get to seventy-five percent. So, so they improved there also. The high school, of course, is not for attendance, theirs is graduation rate, there was a little bit of an increase there. Now, if you go on across, following along, the first column, you see there says total index of a hundred. Last year, they had an index score of thirty-seven point seven-nine, that's all those factors together. When you have an index score, in the next year, they give you a target here. The high school's target for this year was forty-four point three-eight, and for this year, their index score went to forty-nine point seven-four, which was an improvement. And so, they, they met their index score, okay? If you come down, and where it says annual measurable objectives, AMOs, you see in the blue there, both special ed, math and reading language arts, and CI. They met it in both categories by confidence interval, okay? If you come on down to Duval, they were focused, they remained a focus. They made a slight gain in attendance, and you can see what their index score was last year, what their target was, and this year's total index was thirty-six point three-eight, which they were ten points below what their target was supposed to be, or ten percent. If you look at Hamlin, the green means good, it means they grew in those areas, okay? Hamlin, one of the things that a focus school is, the achievement gaps, even though it was a slight gain, they're headed in the right direction because they're closing that achievement gap. And their attendance increased, but last year, their index was forty-five point nine-four, their target was forty-six point seven-six, and they got thirty-six point six-six. So, they did not meet...
All right, that's wrong.
Oh, I'm sorry, down to Duval, forty-five point nine-four. Okay, thank you. Get me straight. Thirty-six point nine-nine, thirty-six point nine-nine, and their index score was thirty-one point six-up, okay?
Yes, our Hamlin there on the, I believe that was thirty-six point nine-nine, right?
Yes.
And their target was the same thing?
That's what, that's what it was.
Thirty-six last year. That was last year. Thirty-six ninety-nine was last year.
Right.
Yeah.
And they scored.
But I've...
Yeah. No, that's what's on the side, I double-checked that because sometimes when those scores are the same, we'll go back in and double-check them.
I just thought since that was your score that made their goal would have been higher, but I made that mistake.
But then you move on down to Harz, you can see that they become a transition school because of their special ed subgroups. Both groups are metted by confidence interval. Okay? Then if you come down to Midway, they met it in math, just total score, reading language arts, all subgroup, was confidence interval. Then they met, met both in special ed with confidence interval. And you can see the gains that Midway made, and what they end up doing, their target was forty-two point two-six, they got forty-eight point seven-four. Ranger, they met it with fourteen point three-five in reading language arts by confidence interval. Remember, Ranger does not have a subgroup in special ed, because they do not have one. You go across. But this is what, before, you know, you was always comparing, well, this school had forty percent, this school had forty-two percent. You can't really do that now, because it's based on growth. Because if you look, this started with the 2012 assessment, this trajectory. And if you look, last year, Ranger had, well, you can go over there, seventy-one point oh-two was their index score. So, their target was sixty-two point two-four. Their actual index score was fifty-three point nine-nine, which is a higher index score than any school in the county. But it's based on growth. So, you know, that's kinda what happened to West Hamlin, you start looking at trend data. It was based on 2012, when they did real well then, then the next year, they didn't, and if you're at the top to start with, it's hard to stay there, you know? It's, you're gonna have to work hard to get there. Okay, so if you look at West Hamlin, they, I'm not gonna explain every one of them, but you'll see in green where they make gains, and what their total score was. Guyan Valley is a transition, they met it in reading language arts for all students that are special ed subgroup, they did reading language arts with the confidence interval. Okay? Any questions about those? And I know over on the left side of your paper folder is information talking about all that, just what they explained. Good?
I think so, definitely. Now, this is the year that, this current year will, next year will it be similar to this, could be the third year, this cycle, or does anything change?
Well, we think it will be, but at this point, we don't even know what assessment we're gonna have, and we're talking about getting assessment results back this late, next year will even be later, because we're gonna have to compare the West test to if it's a smarter balance, or whatever it is, it's gonna be later getting it back, so that won't, this will be hard to compare, but yes, it's will be the same way.
They're also...
But there's also discussion about the AF schools, so it may not, it may be the same, it still will be a growth model, but it may not be a transition school, or a...
That's what I was trying to say, transfer over, it'll change to the grade target.
Yes, they'll change to grades, and...
When will that take, is that next fall?
Next fall.
Is that gonna be based on this year's test, or is that yes?
And since you mentioned that, I'll go, I'll go down a little, I'll talk a little bit. The assessment next year is probably, it's gonna be different, it's gonna be adaptive. Students will sign in, and they'll take three parts in the test, there'll be an adaptive assessment, where they'll get on the computer, if they get this question right, they get a harder question, keep going, keep going. They miss that question, they may get an easier question, and then they'll get more. That's the first part. Then there's gonna be a performance task, where the teachers will have something, they will go into class, they will read that to the students, and they'll discuss it a little bit, and then the students have to go back based on what was discussed, and what was in that performance task, back on the computer, and do a performance on the computer of what that next student did. But one of our real concerns is grades three through five, just on the math and reading language arts, their assessment will last seven hours. Seven hours, and that's not counting social studies and the science. There are some real concerns, and nine through eleven is eight and a half hours, plus the social studies and science. So, you know, it's gonna be, and then you start talking about schedule, the way we've followed schedule in the past, you know, we can say, it was at the high school, you had somebody that had eleven, twenty-five level creators, and they taught, and they tested their science, social studies, math, reading language arts. If I'm a math teacher, I don't want reading language arts teacher to explain my math pass. If I'm a math teacher, I don't want reading language arts, you know, I don't want, I want the students to have a half of that subject, so I can explain it, you know, what that class is gonna be, but you know, so much as that's kind of the feature of our wishes.
And you feel your science and social studies are given through the West test, you share the reading language arts and math, we give, we will give a different test, and you're gonna have to try to make a comparison, or blend those scores together, so...
I'm not looking at school.
Yes, and they're put together to a different types of tests, but so...
Two different types of standards. With two different types of standards?
And to enter your respective standards, yes.
Okay. Now, on this one, I share this one over here. This is our trend data. Okay? And if you look at the colors, one diagonal, that is following the students, and that's what we want to do. We can't say, well, this year's third grade at this, last year's third grade. That's not comparing the students. So, for example, if you wanna look, let's just take, let's just take the third grade in two thousand and eleven. You can see they, in two thousand and eleven, they got forty-three point oh-two. Two thousand and twelve percent proficient, forty-two point four-four. Two thousand and thirteen, as in the fifth grade, they got forty-two. And in the sixth grade, two thousand and fourteen, they got what? Thirty-seven. That way, you're following the students instead of each grade class. Because that's what we're looking at now. We're looking at for and growing, how much your students grow, not so much what that grade level is. And then you have this year's state score. That is the county, and also, when I do that, when the high schools are putting that, because it's ninth, tenth, and family fair. And then I have it for each school. If you want me to go over, or if you have any questions, you can look at it, and if there's any improvement jumps out there, that's you. We always try to follow the students.
And every group is different, aren't they?
Yes, they are. But, but the, the scores across the state this year were down.
Maybe in a variety of reasons. They're, 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 they're west, west, or...
Take the non-high for the first time.
Yeah. If I'm reading, I'm trying to page two, looking at West Hamlin, I'm looking at the third grade, looking at the third grade. Twenty-eleven, sixty-two point two-six. Twenty-twelve, the third grade class, fifty-five point oh-seven. Twenty-thirteen, a forty-three, and twenty-fourteen, a twenty-eight. My reading never...
That, those are different students.
I understand that, but overall, the third grade classes, I mean, it just seems like that's a trend throughout almost all of the schools.
One, one of the areas that, that we're really worried, yeah, in your life.
Has changed, and our students just doing worse year after year after year, and almost every level is not reading, yes?
Answering your question is great, but yes, both departments. Students are not performing as well because of the difference in standards, Mr. Lewis by May.
Please.
And, and the way that the, the assessment is delivered, we're going from paper pens to a computer. And you're talking even just the basic developmental hand identification of the third graders is a huge, huge issue that we are, we're working with about there in schools, that when you have, when you are a third grader, you'd have to click a button, a whole thing, and pick an answer, and drag it over, and drop it down into a... We're not testing in some cases right now. And, and, and this is, this is the, the information that we are debating. Are we testing knowledge or are we testing technology skills? Motor, or, or motor skills? And, and I think that that's, that's kind of the, we're, we're gonna have to just wrestle with this for another couple of years as we go more into this computer, you know. And there's a difference between playing a game with your thumbs and using all your digits. That's the other thing, you know, everybody says, oh, our kids, our kids are computer tech, oh, you know, we can't let them use our notes. But when they have to type and use both hands intermittently to type in these responses, for a third grader, that's a danger. And that's a developmental risk that, that I think that we're gonna have to address.
And that's the second part of the answer, is the last two years, we've been teaching on the standard, that we've been testing on the west school. You know, it's interesting, we had lunch with some principals from Tennessee around Nashville, and they weren't the same, but they just decided at their state level, or, or somebody decided that until the assessment catches up with what we're teaching, they put the common core on the shelf and said, we're gonna, we're gonna teach the standards that we're gonna test them. And then it is, they, they keep saying, well, it'll catch up next year, but, you know, we, we're, we're not sure. We're, we're not sure. Well, I just wanna, you know, one, one real quick thing, if I may. On the left side of your packet underneath the data, there's a, on the right side, I'm sorry, on the right side. On the right side, there's a... All this information now is put in one place. It's called Zoom, West Virginia. It's on the state department. It's public information now. Later on, there's no, right now, there's no student information there. Later on, there's gonna be private information that we'll have a password to where we can go in with the students and so forth. I just wanna show you real quick, if you wanna look at some of this, it's real, you just go to the department event webpage. Here, there's an icon called Zoom, West Virginia. Okay? Just click on that. And then you go down to the Zoom, West Virginia dashboard. That's what that one handout is showing you, where to click. Okay? Now, if you look up at the top of there, you have, as is shown on the handout, it shows my school's performance, enrollment, graduation rate, dropout, attendance, state assessments. All this is one, one place. I'm gonna go, for example, to, let me go to my school's performance. Okay? What you have to do, you can look at any school in the county. I'm just gonna pull up Lincoln, and I'm just gonna go to, I'll go to Duval, since it's our first one. Okay? And you go through, and, and there, the information I shared is up here. And then here is the index score, like for the AMOs. You can see the green dot is where, green line is where Duval was. The red dot was the lowest scoring school in the state. So, we're not down there, so we're good. But here was the high scoring in that, in that area. Okay? And if we go on down, it, it shows all the index. Okay? If I go, go back to that. My school's performance, there's all, there's a little drop down. Hit that little drop down, let's go down to annual. It's hard for me to see that. Okay? If you see, the blue is the trajectory that we was talking about, that schools have to be at seventy-five percent by two thousand and twenty. The red is where the school scored in that year. So, you can see it started in two thousand and twelve. You can see where, where, where they're going. Okay? That's one part of it. Okay? I'm gonna go back, and you can click on any school, and you can just do the district data, but my school's performance is not under, you don't have that under district here, we have date. Okay? So, I'm gonna go back, let's go back to state assessment results. Okay? If you want to, let's just go to Lincoln County. Let's just do all schools, all grades. But there shows all grades with the first code, first color there's math, then you have reading, it shows grade level, where everyone is. And you can do that for any school, you can drill down to a school, and it has, actually has trend data in there for the last couple, three years. So, that's a good tool that, that you can use. And, and as we discovered last year, trying to do this, Mr. Minkett, Mr. Kenny and I, they have us, this information on three different websites. And we'd go to one website, and it'd say forty-two percent proficient. We'd go to another website, and it'd say forty-eight percent proficient, that one'd say thirty-six. And we'd say, which one's correct? So, they did finally put it all together, which is, is a good tool that, for you to look at the information. It also has the enrollment up there and a lot of other things.
Yeah. Given that it's Christmas next week, and I'm a glass half-full kinda guy, is it a reasonable interpretation that the, the high school and Midway's scores are something to celebrate?
They may improve.
They may improve significantly, I mean...
They may improve. But one of the things you need to look at also is the trend data.
Okay.
Because in the high school, you're only accountable for the level of pressure.
Okay.
Which they did, they improved in one and went down from nothing. Midway was a, was a real success. But, but then again, if you're a priority school...
Yep.
You have much more room for improvement than if you were a success school.
But, but just their proficiency scores alone?
Yes.
Seem to be low?
Yes, it is, it is reason to celebrate. And you type, what's gonna improve, we're gonna celebrate.
Okay. I've read some social media there, a lot of people bragging the fact that their ranking has gone up in the high schools.
I have been on there to...
Well, I mean, they compare like all, every high schools are all...
Yeah, yeah. No, there, there was improvement. There certainly was. And they should be congratulated for those improvements. Yeah, they moved up about a year, yeah.
Yeah.
But, but, you know, it, it was just like, you know, Midway, what they did this year, I think their index score, what their index score this year, sixty-two?
Forty, forty-eight, or twenty-three. They don't, they don't vary.
Yeah. But so, you know, it's one thing to be there, but then you're gonna have to maintain it. We're gonna see a lot of yo-yo effects, but hopefully by two thousand and twenty, we'll all be at seventy-five percent. And then the assessment next year's gonna be a lot harder.
And, and next year, Bill, that will be testing in the high school? Or, or the county building will be, um, different grades? Not just the eleven?
I'm not, I think that is correct, but I'm not positive.
Not positive.
I just know this year was a discussion, so we did clarify that it was just eleven.
Just eleven.
Yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Lynn?
Sure.
All right. Thanks for your...
Thank you.
All right, I'll be back there. Give us some big thought there. Get back and get online and check. Okay. We're in again. We'll go into administrative section. Do they have a motion to put it there, please? Carol made a motion, the second? Mr. Kirk.
Okay. Item A is for school volunteers. On occasion, they also serve as bus chaperones or provide transportation for students to enroll athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, who have provided proof of privately unionized loyalty insurance and have completed volunteer organizations. Item B is a contract with Patricia and Myers to provide direct and indirect service for time and location students, as deemed appropriate by the county law and order of need, according to the terms of the contract. And this is due to our regular teacher for the issuing pair, being determined, and will find some certified. C, a memorandum of understanding with rest here to provide a fair, best, and Midway elementary two days a week during the twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen school year, according to the terms of the memorandum. Item D is approval of non-career technical education concentrations at the county high school as follows, effective immediately. Item E, outstate travels with following recording, Joe Carson's two tours, uh, it's the end of twenty-fifteen through the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifteen to fifteen, the twenty-fifteen international training program is passing the state, this pay for three hundred two months. Any questions?
Questions, do you want? If I call for question, then, all favor administrative items. Any ask? Okay. We'll move to finance section, no motion. We'll move to ground, made a motion, second, respect for Mr. Wilkinson. Bertie?
Okay.
You're up.
Item A, scheduled invoices totaling seven hundred thirty-three thousand, nine hundred fifty-one dollars and forty-three cents. Invoices are available for public inspection at county office. And I have a draft sheet to go with you guys. More numbers.
Play one.
Okay. As you guys know, we're getting ready to go into personnel season next month. The state has issued their preliminary comps, and just kind of, I'm gonna let you guys know where we're at. So, I'm gonna have to go to the... What we're looking at for next year is in the yellow column. And then I gave you guys attachments of the data from the state department, which supports and always walk the nation. So, what we always do is we start at the top, this is what we have, what we're gonna be funded for. And then at the bottom, if we get the personnel season, then we'll put you center. But if you'll look, you know, we, last year, we worked really hard, we were over forty-point two-three-nine positions when we were working on our budget season. And once we got finished with all of that, we ended up being over twenty-two point nine in the comp. So, we cut seventeen positions last year in the personnel season. And after I printed this report out, I just went back, if you wanna know, um, in the year twelve thirteen, if you wanna talk, put this in on the bottom, we had eleven point four-one-two positions up in column G. And then in column F, we cut eleven point six five-one-two positions. So, we have made several separate certifications, and we still have no final services, and we don't... Okay? So, let's get back to column I. Our head count here is thirty-seven eleven, and that is up twenty students, which is good. Last year, we were down to two students, that's why we were over so much and had to cut certain positions. FTE adjustments, that's for those students who aren't in the classroom five days a week, because that's just for preschool. So, they cut the head count, and so it's cut twelve point five-two positions, which gives us a mag FTE of three thousand, six hundred ninety-eight point forty-eight. And we ended up on, on this preliminary column, one-two-five certified adult, I believe that will be corrected, but with what, the data that we currently have, we're gonna be funded for three thousand, six hundred ninety-eight point seven-three positions. And that's an increase of eighteen point seven-three, not left on your formula. So, if you'll put type value eighteen point seven-three, that's the increase in enrollment that we'd be cutting off. And then we're gonna look at the professional data. So, when we go through and observe our list, which is a huge project, has to be completed by, of course, week in October, we get through, we had two hundred seventy-four point two professional educators that needed to be funded through the state aid grant. There's no other, other than the state, of course, say, these people are funded with us. And then I did an arrow, so that's what we actually had. If you'll follow the arrow down, we did our budgeting last year. We budgeted for two hundred seventy-two. So, you can see, we were, we picked up two people from budgeting to, to the actual certified list. And I think Trish and I actually identified those and said...
We did.
Special ed and... We said, Special Ed and, uh, we knew at the top.
Yeah.
So if you'll look over, um, in column K, so we actually cut seven point one three professional instructional positions. The next line down, that's the number of positions that will be funded based on the enrollment numbers. So we're gonna be funded for two hundred sixty-eight point five three positions. So when we look at professional instructional offering, we're gonna be over five point six seven. But the really good thing is, look what a cut that we made. The prior year, we were fourteen, now we're five, so that's a, we, you know, decreased that by eight point four nine. So that's some really big bucks. Then, the next group is our professional student support, veteran counselors, admissions. We have ten point five that should be funded through the formula. Formula is one of our seven point one four, so we actually glossed funding for those positions. And that was a Senate bill, forty-eight something back in two thousand nine, and it's kind of decreases a little bit every year. So we've got a little decrease on that of, of point five three positions. So that group of people, we're gonna be over three point three six. So when we look at all those professional folks and combine the totals, we're gonna be over nine positions, which is a improvement of seven point four four compared to our year. The next group of data is your service personnel. So when we did our certified list on our service personnel, service personnel are what we differ from professionals. Service personnel are based on the number of days they're employed. So if you're a two hundred day employee, you're one position. If you're a two hundred forty day employee, you're one point two positions. So when we look at this number, that is not forty, it's, uh, FTEs. So on our certified list, we had a hundred eighty-four point nine eight seven. And if you'll follow your arrow down, when we did our budgeting, we had one eighty-one point seven six five. And I know one of those was the maintenance position that we picked up and, huh, uh, some Special Eds. Oh, sign language, yeah, sign language. So those numbers are holding really, really close to what we budgeted. You know, when you do the budget, it's, here's today, here's what we think it's gonna be. Always changes. Okay, we are gonna be funded for hundred sixty-seven point five two two positions. So we're gonna be over seventeen positions on service. Still an improvement from last year. Last year, we were over twenty-three, so it's improved six point three three. So when we look at all this combined together, the number that we're gonna be working with is we're gonna be over twenty-six points four six five positions. And then as we go through the personnel season, we finalize our numbers, then I'll come back in and put those numbers in. And then just let me make this statement. When I give you this data, this is strictly certified list information. You know, we know there's some positions out there that are not funded. We're not supposed to be funded through the formula, not allowed. Treasurers position, maintenance, transportation, um, our social worker, most people, there's no factoring in here. This is strictly, all these numbers are here, we can tell back to certified list. Also in the service, you know, there's a few positions that are picked up through Medicaid. You know, you're not gonna see this here, but as we go through personnel season, I'll show you those different little adjustments. But you can look at any number on here, any year, and it'll always come back to certified list, so I just keep this real quick. Okay? Any questions? And as you know, what eats up the budget is personnel. And I've said for several years, we need to try to make it a target of getting within our budgeted work. That's what eats up your money, more so than anything else that we do, is, is being able to coordinate. You know, as I give you those final, final numbers, when I do our financial statements, and I say, okay, here's what our budget or what our financial statements are showing, but I've already used a, you know, million dollars of this to add all those unfunded positions. So just, you know, the decisions, it's like a jigsaw puzzle, make it all work. But that is our starting point.
Well, I guess that's where the administration has to look at what we're there, are all of them still needed? Or are there gonna be any additional needs in fact, or all this?
It's a major project and it's a big job for Trish and Jack.
Sure, we'll, we'll hear more about this in a minute. A lot?
A lot more.
Okay, anything else, uh, school finance, anybody? Have any question for anybody? Uh, as you may recall, here, a while back, I asked Bertie to provide some information regarding retirees, pensions, those that are, uh, kind of, going on the dental optical system. I know we've had a couple of, uh, present, or people come in and speak to the board on that account. And, uh, today, Bertie has, uh, shared a lot of that data with us. I have heard the George Goll, because it's like, but one thing that stood out to me is that the number of actual couples who were called, people who were both retirees or retirees of the board, there were over twenty-nine of those. And I was, I always had my mind, there'd be a lot more than that, 'cause there were four hundred and one retirees, right there. So we're on, you know, we're talking about twenty-nine, uh, families or individuals. And, uh, you know, my preliminary cost estimate on that was, would be less than twelve thousand dollars. If everybody there participated, which is highly unlikely, a lot of people are set in their ways, and I'm not gonna do dental opt, you know, just like, like I do direct deposit. So I would, I'd like for the board to be thinking about that, uh, that we would make that equitable to where we could, that only each family would provide one check and then we could make it fair to the family who, you know, when one employee, who was one of the board and one wasn't, uh, also, uh, that. I know it's difficult to make this thing fair to everybody, but when we look at those amounts of money, once again, the, if I did my calculation, it would be less than twelve thousand dollars, and that was with everyone participating. And I think it would be, so I just want everybody to think about that and get some feedback and some feedback. Okay, uh, if there's nothing else, folks on finance, have a motion, have an all yes vote for the items presented. Yes, okay. Go to personnel section, do you have a motion, please? Mr. Curry?
Second.
Second one is closed.
Okay. Uh, section A is for the appointment of short-term or a long-term substitute professional personnel. Section B is for the appointment of professional personnel pending renewal after certification. Section C is employment of professional personnel pending return of regular employee. Section D is transfer of professional personnel. Section E is employment of substitute personnel. Section N is employment of service personnel. Section G is transfer of service personnel. And section H is transfer of service personnel pending return of the regular employee. Section I is employment of extracurricular athletic personnel. Section J is reclassification of service personnel. Section K is retirement and or resignation. And that's noted under the effective date, whether it's retiring or resignation. And to establish the effective date of the appointment of, tab now, this is the associate principal at Lincoln County High School as of December the second, two thousand fourteen. Any questions?
Thank you, everybody.
Now, I have one.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I see Mr. Limb's on here, does, uh, do you think he'll be coming to speak to us for free? If he's, if he is?
That is a consideration. Or he could be less free, wouldn't he, Bertie?
I know he's spoken, I think, three, four times. So you're saying less?
Is that a problem?
I know, yes.
We're saying a whole lot of those will be in the hands of.
I suppose we're just seeing a different setting. Okay, I just have one thing that, oftentimes, I'll have people ask me, what does Bill Limb do? And then I'll say, well, he does pasting, this, that, and, could, now, how many days does Bill work right now in his position? Is it?
Hundred and forty.
Hundred and forty days, okay.
That's a contract.
Okay. Now, I guess what I'm getting, are we, is it the intention to post this position again that he's leaving?
Well, that's, uh, for discussion with you guys, as far as, uh, we, we've been in discussion. And I have said, I'm not sure what we're gonna do yet, because I wanted to talk with you all. I wanted to see in one direction, uh, but...
Could we, is he a job description?
He does.
Could we maybe, if you gave us that, we could see some of the duties he has. I know you can always add to these things, so, and add some, just, uh, but if we could see some of the duties that are currently on that position, maybe that helps, as you think this. And at the same time, considering what Bertie helped us about, uh, as far as funding is concerned, if we, you know...
No, just to add, why, his, what Bill's position is more in these numbers, because it's all sorts of those positions.
Right.
So it's kind of outside of these numbers.
You gotta pay the dollar for that.
Yes, yes, you do have to pay those off.
But maybe we need to see what the position consists of and, um, you know, what it is.
Right.
And you go off, you know, you may have some recommendation about that, too, you know, about...
We've been, we've been tossing around some ideas, because some of the, some of the duties that Mr. Limb, uh, has at this time will be changing and going away in, in the position that, uh, he currently holds, um, such as here, you know, and that is going away. You know, there are some changes, but we, you know, I, we've tossed around some ideas, but, but I did say that we, as of today, I mean, I said, we will talk to the board, we'll see what direction, you know, we'll give you all, uh, that information, the job description, and, uh, look at, uh, and what we might do with this.
And then, at some point, you may want to give us your recommendation as to what you think, you know, on, on the date, that basis, to determine. Okay, that's a good thing I have. Um, okay, does anybody have anything else on personnel? If I'm a call for, is that an all yes vote on personnel?
Yes.
Yes, no? All right, we'll get into comments and some rooms, people in the room.
Yes, um, I wanted to be able to give you all the, um, figures that Bertie alluded to in, in her presentation. I think I sent you all a, um, an, in one of your updates, that we did increase in enrollment this year. At the beginning of the year, we were, uh, worried, thinking that we were gonna decrease. But when we got the numbers back from the state department, uh, our actual FTE that we'll be funded on, uh, went up eighteen point five six. The actual head count of students that are there, but they're not full-time enrolled, is three thousand seven hundred and eleven. So we were at head count wise, twenty students. So, twenty students, or, yeah, actual students, actual students that, that may not be there full-time, but they are enrolled and they are, uh, counted, yes. And one thing that I forgot, I want to start, uh, to talk about that, that, because, buddy. Your time's up.
Well, it was the, remember, we talked to you a couple times, once at Duval, once over here, the celebrations over that, like, for, where we was going to give that provider, regular way, ranger, mental health, that, the ride after school, the ranger, and other activities, we got word. Last week, we never seen the thing, it's a hundred thousand, all of here, three, two, one.
Good. We'll take all those and get it. We'll even let you talk additional time. Okay, anybody else have anything? Board have any comments?
I have one.
Mr. Curry?
Sorry, here, uh, Trish, her, Mr. Midgibb, they're both paying it. This school zone out here, coming from this way, is way down past the post office. The side fifteen mile line. It needs to be over here at the pharmacy, where the pharmacy shut their phone. Because that misses a lot of traffic. Coming down that side street, traffic from the post office, traffic from the pharmacy. And I was sitting down here the other day, I've been along like the car, so, 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 yeah. We're gonna have to get along like this, along this.
You know, after you mentioned that, did they, I looked, I didn't even...
Well, it's hard to see even down there.
Cause I looked, and I said, well, there's my, my home, obviously. Does further run back?
It's a run back, probably, so. And I started there at that sign, the pharmacy there, perfect way.
There in the sign. Anything else, Trish, that's all. All right, now, we have any questions, school adjournment here?
I just, cause, when you were at Ranger, and they brought up the cafeteria tables, they've already been ordered. None of the regular, so, so that, that's in progress.
That needs to be there. Sure. Okay. Well, we'll adjourn then until anywhere to six, two thousand and fifteen, six o'clock, if we all submit a motion. Carol, second, please. Uh, Brad, all yes?
Yeah.